I am recording this. I haven't put any of them up yet, some of the ones we've done, but these will be put up also on the website eventually. In case someone wants to listen to the conversation. All right, so just want to touch base with everyone. The biggest thing I want to talk about tonight's advocacy, but before that, you know, we've been slowly reopening. Over a period of time, we've done it in phases. Right now, we, as of last Thursday, we're about 71% of our capacity, our previous pre-COVID capacity for day have here at Jefferson. I'm going to mute everybody. Okay, so I'm muting everyone. When we get, I'll stop periodically. You can unmute yourself and ask a question if you want. It just eliminates the background information or conversations. Okay, so again, we're talking a little bit about our reopening, which has been soft. Our day have is slowly integrated up north. It's been a little more difficult because the Consumer Advisory Board for Willover Class people has stopped people coming into the program right off the bat. We slowly, I think we've got one person in that's Willover class. We're working with them right now to get them back to program. We do still have some restrictions on capacity. We cannot have more than 15 people in a room or area. And we have to abide by the six feet social distancing, which is basically 36 square feet. So we take the square footage of the room, divide it by 36 and come up with the capacity. We're not anywhere near that right now. Like I said, our day have programs about 71% compared to pre-COVID. In a survey that we had done a while ago through the EDA, Executive Director Association showed that about 25% of the families were not going to come back until a vaccine was in place where they were really comfortable with what had taken place with the reopening plans. So we expect that that's going to take place with some people, but we're happy with the number right now. We still are having difficulty getting all the state operated facilities back. That's been a slow process, but Cassie Reagan is doing a good job of working on getting those people back into program. Our site-based pre-book, that's done the best of all of them. That's at about 92%. So we're about 56 people attending versus 61 capacity with the pre-COVID. And our community pre-book is about 72%. So we're slowly getting back to normal, if there will be a normal in the future. Right now, we've been very successful with what we've done with our pre-opening plans and our opening plans as well as the practices we've put in place for visitation, sanitation, use of PPE. So far, we've only had three staff that have been positive between the two counties in that one person we support. We've had some people that have been tested and been negative or in the one person that left went out of state to Mississippi and came back positive. So we've been very successful with the practices we've put in place, the sanitation. So kudos to all the drugstore professionals out there and the managers for making sure we have a safe environment for our people to come in for programming. It's been very successful. We've also done flu shots up north and we're working on getting them done here in Jefferson soon for both offering it to staff as well as the people we support. We want to be a little bit ahead of the curve there and right now is the time to get that done. Anybody have any questions on what I've talked about so far? Okay. So we all know that New York State's having significant fiscal issues because of COVID and actually before COVID. So we were looking at a $2 billion deficit prior to COVID. Now they're saying it's about a $14 to $15 billion deficit, you know, over a $60 billion deficit projected for the next four years. I think Governor Cuomo has been, you know, hoping for federal relief from some of the the COVID-related interventions that have taken place for on the net, the fourth one coming up right now. So far, no money's been given, really not a lot of money's been given to states or localities to deal with the COVID issues. So there's been significant cuts as a result of this and probably more to come. You know, I talked a little bit last time about some of the projected things that are going to happen, but they're slated to happen tomorrow, even though New York State has not received approval from the Center for Medicaid and Medicare, CMS. They are slated to have reductions in three categories in the residential programs. So originally they were going to do a 2% cut across all programs across the state. They decided to come back with this mechanism because they don't really feel that it's truly a cut. And they're in three areas. One's vacancies, so our residential program always has vacancies. And right now, we have about 10 vacancies between the two counties, working diligently on filling those. Is that still a 10, Tara?
Yes.
Okay, still working diligently on filling those. In the past, the state used to do a reconciliation up to 5% of the vacancies, which would cover those at the end of the year. That's being eliminated with, so they would cover our empty beds with our rate. That's being eliminated, the vacancy adjustments being eliminated. That alone is going to be a rather big hit, probably about $1.2 million to the residential program. We're hoping that we'll be able to fill some of those beds and reduce that. We're also looking at, you know, is there anything else we can do for the residential program in regards to a new model of service? Or, you know, reducing the size of some of the locations or in fact, looking to increase slightly in some cases. We have several two-bed locations in Watertown and they're very difficult to manage. They're fiscally difficult to operate and looking at consolidating some of those. Maybe taking a vacancy we have in one location and taking a two-bed and leasing a location with a three-bed. So everyone has their own bedroom if people are compatible and we'd save more money on the operations there. So looking at that, looking at possibly even giving up beds. Not something we want to do, but we had a, we meet with the commissioner on occasion. The, the Ark of New York has a call every Wednesday morning. He usually comes on one call every Wednesday, once a month. And he basically saying OBW is broke. They don't have the resources to meet the needs that are out there. And the only way they can recoup money is to reduce funding to the voluntary providers. So this is, he's saying the vacancies that are out there really aren't truly vacancies because they can't afford to fill them. But we're still getting requests to fill those beds. The difficult part is a lot of those people are heavily medically involved or heavily behaviorally involved. And in some cases, phrenically involved. So we're very, very careful on who we take. We don't want to take people that are not fitting into the location in which we have an empty facility. We're also making sure that we don't take someone that we can't handle. That has higher needs than we can meet. Because what's historically happened is once a provider takes someone, you cannot get them back. The state's really supposed to be the provider of last resort. And typically they don't take the person back to fulfill that need. There's been organizations out there, ARCs, that have had an extremely difficult time. There was one location last year that had over a million dollars in costs for one person to cover them. And it's just, it's a difficult situation. So we're looking at a variety of things and Lynn and Tara can talk a little bit about that maybe after I'm done talking. The other thing that we're looking at is areas that we can save money right now. So we're looking residentially here in Jefferson County. We just consolidated the supervision of the program. So prior, we had supervision in day have, supervision in residential. And it's kind of a optimum time to try this in Jefferson because all our, most of our people in day have live in our residences. So they're already there and being supported. So we just melded a couple of positions between residential and day have and the supervisions being done between those programs. One person's doing it now or one person's responsible for the supervision in a variety of director and assistant director positions and coordinators. That's going to save us about over $200,000 annualized. So we want to try that. We also recently lost our vocational director and we did not fill it. We looked at what the really truly the needs are with the program and we're looking more in the business development area. So we promoted a couple of staff and gave them additional responsibilities. And Lynn, our chief operating officer, has taken on additional responsibilities for the oversight of vocational. And that move is saving us about $70,000 a year, annualized. The other things we're looking at is we are moving into one single retirement plan with the Ark of New York. It's going to be beneficial to our staff and it's going to save us about $80,000 a year in cost to the organization. We're also looking at a new time and attendance program. It's called Paycom versus ADP. And that's going to save us approximately $70,000 a year and be more efficient. So the team is really looking at everything we can do that's not going to directly impact services. We want to try to reduce, you know, management oversight and have more effective and efficient systems out there. The area that really we need to advocate on and we're going to be putting information on the website, asking you to contact our local legislators as well as our state representatives, the majority and minority leaders in the Senate and the the Assembly for this issue. The big issue is therapeutic leave. So, you know, people deserve an opportunity to go home for a visit. They have, they should be able to go on vacation. And we allowed that for a period of time. The state always covered the daily rate that we reimburse for keeping the bed. Our fixed costs don't go down because that person is out of the program. We still have to pay, you know, our fixed costs related to the operating of the program. And what the state has done is they've limited therapeutic leave to 96 days. We really don't have maybe only one or two people that go above that. So there's not a big impact there, but they're only going to pay us 50% of the rate when someone's out of the house. So, you know, we're trying to work right now with the Ark of New York to come up with a definitive definition of what qualifies for billing purposes. So we could still not be impacted greatly if, for example, the person leaves on a Friday. And if we provided some services and they leave later in the afternoon, we'd be able to get bill for Friday when they go home to spend time with their family. And then when they come back on Sunday, as long as we can provide a service and they're there by a certain time, we can bill for Sunday too. So the impact won't be that bad. So we're willing to work with families and, you know, we think people deserve vacations and we think they deserve to go home with their family members. But I think families have to be cognizant that it's going to impact our finances that we depend on to operate the program. So that's an area I want the advocacy to go on on is it really, it's, it's not fair that the people we support are put in this predicament of limiting visits home with their family members. It's really something that's, it's not appropriate. So that's, that's the area we really want to advocate on. And the other area that is causing some issues is what they call retainer days. So if someone goes into a hospital, in the past, we've been paid up to 14 days, our regular rate. And the 14 days is cumulative, so it's 14 days per person in the program. So somebody might not use any, but somebody might use more, but as long as we don't go over the total, we were fine. That's being cut in half, so we reimbursed half of that. And we have a large group of our population that's over the age of 50. We have medically involved people. So we have, and we have people that have, that are duly diagnosed with psychiatric diagnosis that occasionally have to be admitted also. In both these cases, we still provide a lot of support to the hospital. In some cases, we're there all the time. In other cases, we go in and provide support depending on the needs of the person. So we're still have costs there and they're still cutting, they're still going to go ahead and cut it in half. So that'd be another area for advocacy. So just those three things alone are about 1.2 to 1.6 million dollar cut annually to our program, residential program. So it's going to be significant. You know, we are strong, we're still a stable organization. We're in a good position fiscally, but it doesn't take long to burn through your dollars when things like this keep happening. The other area that we're being hit on cuts is what they call a 20% withhold. So any, any program that's 100% state funded, they're doing a 20% withhold. That includes our Support and Employment Program. It includes our Access VR vocational program. It includes some that's in our OMH also vocationally. It includes our Universal Pre-K School, 20% cut to what we get paid for that. It includes our self-direction. There's certain categories that are, that are going to be impacted by this, not all, but some. So it's rather, it's rather daunting when they're calling it a withhold because he's saying if, the governor's saying if in fact there was some federal government relief, we might get it back. I wouldn't hold my hand out for that to happen, but that's what's being told. We think because of what's happening across the state with the continued budgetary issues, that that 20% withhold is going to become a 20% cut. And then it will impact programs and significantly. Those state operated ones, RSPIT's also included in there. Some of the things like support for leases and and some upgrades, say to a a ramp being put in, environmental modification, those are not impacted, they're waived. But still, that 20%, if we took it across the board and we annualized it, it's $485,000. So again, there's $2 million, about 1.4 to $2 million. Okay, let me just know. Annualized that we may be impacted with, so rather significant. Anybody have any questions related to that? You can go off mute and ask or if Lynn or Tara want to talk a little bit more about residential, the remodel.
The, some of the restructuring, Howie? Yep, so what we did over the past month, based off some of the renovations that are happening on our 420 Gaffney Drive site, is we blended the program because most of our folks that live with us in our IRAs attend our day programming. So we were able to blend the two departments to work more cohesively, which as a result saved a lot of money for the agency. And it's going to, we believe, provide much better programming and consistency for, consistency for the people we support. We're not pushing them out the door in the morning to get on the bus or we're not rushing them at the end of the day to come back home. They stay with their roommates, their peers. They engage in different activities within their community. It was a model that St. Lawrence County was doing at nine of their residences. So we really just modeled that model up in St. Lawrence, down in Jefferson County at all 32 of our sites at this time. So we hope to kind of assess it over the next nine months while we finish our capital campaign and, or capital construction. And if it continues to go well, that will be a model that will keep down in Jefferson County as well and possibly expand it in St. Lawrence. Tara, anything or was that, did I cover it all?
No, that pretty much covers it all in a nutshell.
Okay, so talking about PPE, we have obtained PPE from the Ark of New York and we've bought some. So the Ark of New York spent, I think it was like $3.6 million on PPE. They are applying for FEMA to get some of that back. There is a little bit of an issue with FEMA in regards to how much you can have in inventory. So they're finding that a little challenging because some chapters didn't go through a lot because they haven't had any incidents of COVID where others burned through it quite a bit. So what we're doing moving forward, excuse me, is the Ark of New York is reutilizing. So that inventory that they gave us will be used in an emergency. If some of the chapters have an outbreak, we can share it amongst all of us and we're going to be doing that. We also bought inventory ourselves and that, that we will keep, that won't be moved around. We are applying for a FEMA grant ourselves. Between the PPE we purchased for both St. Lawrence and Jefferson County, it's about $113,000. And I can also add about $4,000 in costs related to preparing the document. Here's half the application. It's rather labor intensive and the accounting departments and some of the admin assistants have been helping me put stuff together. So you have to have all the back, the background, the documentation to support what you purchased. So we're hoping to get about 75% of that back. We also applied for HHS funding, human health services funding for a two-month period. We initially did not, did not get approved and they asked for us to reapply. And I think it was because of the merger, they were a little confused in the application because there was part of the year, there was two organizations and all of a sudden there was one. So we reapplied and we've been approved and we had asked for about $130,000 there. So that'll be good. And in St. Lawrence, we run the transportation for the county, the public transportation. We've worked with them very effectively and our county department's done a great job up there for that in transportation and that we've been eligible for CARESAC funding for that program. We've already received $155,000 in the first draw and we're going to receive more than that in our second draw. So very helpful in that transportation program in St. Lawrence helps us with the rest of our programs because it does maintain a small surplus. It's very effective. So a little bit about our, our main facility on Gaffney. We are right on schedule. They're doing a great job, very happy with our construction management, our contractors, our architect. That building is, you know, in 72 was, the first part was built and so it's intended, it needs some tender loving care and they've gone through completely. It's going to be a complete renovation. It's something we've been working on for three or four years and it came to fruition with Michelle Carpenter's help in the capital campaign. It's about a $10.2 million project with another close to a million dollars in to buy new equipment and supplies for inside furniture and such when, when we're done. But it'll be a beautiful building, it'll be much more accessible. It'll have much more appropriate adaptive equipment. It'll have lots more bathrooms than it's had in the past. And the rooms will be designed much more effectively for the people that we support. We're probably not going to return as many to the building as were there before on the adult end. But we do have people that, you know, want to come back to the site-based program and that benefit from the clinic location that's right there also. Up in St. Lawrence, we've done a lot of renovations on our residential programs. We've replaced, I believe, three roofs. We spent over $600,000 on IT upgrades and fire safety. We have driveways been replaced, we've got fences that have been replaced and Maitis Crew is doing a great job of keeping up the facilities up there. At some point down the road, we'll be looking at some capital projects up there also. There are a couple of them and I see Pat on the phone, she wants us to put an addition on one location. So we have more bedrooms, single bedrooms in that location and that's something we could look at up, up north. The other issue that's out there, and you probably, you might have heard some of this, Public Radio did an article on Civil Liberties Group that talked about the 14C certificate. So the 14C certificate is a certificate issued by the Department of Labor that allows us to pay sub-minimum wage based on productivity. So usually it's for people that are below 50% productive. And you pay that person based on the productivity, which is reviewed at least twice a year. Or if there's a significant difference in their ability, it's noticed. We average with our 14C in our work centers, I believe we average about $8 an hour on the average. This is a huge issue on the federal and state level. It's been talked about being eliminated for many years. You know, we have promoted, we have promoted community integration and community employment for years. Both the workshops in St. Lawrence and the work center here in Jefferson used to be rather large with a large number of people that worked there. They're not large anymore because a lot of those people are now working in the community or they've chosen other, other paths. In Jefferson, just because I know historically we had over 200 people in our work center. We now have about 20, 23. The people that aren't there, like I said, are out, we've already recognized them, we've already got them out there. We have site-based pre-book that's in that building and both in both locations. For job readiness skills, we have other programs that are there also to promote that. And we still try to get people out into the community, but there's always going to be some people who don't have the ability to work competitively, but they still want to work. So we formed a group with the Ark of New York, the EDA, the Executive Directors Association. I'm going to be chairing a 14C group that's going to be looking both at the state level and the federal level. So we may be asking for advocacy here also. I don't think we're going to be able to stop it from disappearing, but we'll be able to extend it over a period of time to give us more time on how we can react to it. Because, you know, I still want to provide that opportunity for people. That's what they want to do. I want to be able to provide the opportunity that they can work in that work center, that integrated environment now. Because there's no way that we could afford to pay someone who's 20 or 30% productive minimum wage. And, you know, we're doing, Lynn's doing an analysis, her group right now on what would, what the impact would be on our contracts if we had to pay everybody minimum wage. We'd have to raise the price of the, the products that we're making and probably would be dropped. So large ramifications. The other issue here is if we have to pay people minimum wage or more and there's going to be some people that are going to be able to gravitate to the integrated model, we're going to have to limit how much they can work because it'll impact their benefits. So they might not be able to work the 30 hours a week, they might only be over 10 or 12 hours a week. So we'll have to look at alternatives there. The other problem it causes, we have to have a ratio of 75-25 for both NICID and for New York State Children's Industries and also for Source America. And if we lose those people with disabilities, we lose the opportunity to do those contracts. And those contracts are very significant for us here in Jefferson. And also, we don't use the 14C in our, our service contracts. Up north in St. Lawrence, we have the two border stations. Down here in Jefferson, the one border station. And then we also have multiple contracts on Fort Drum. Those contracts alone are probably close to $10 million in revenue. And that $10 million is money that OPW can't touch, any profit that we make on it. We can use that to cover our losses instead of our programs. So very important that we maintain those. So more to come on that. Nothing's happening right now, so people don't have to worry about their loved one losing their job in the work center. But it's, it's down the road and we'll continue to advocate against that. So I'll open it up to any questions or if any of my staff that are on want to talk, feel free.
Oh yeah, I'm just, I'll let you know that Amy posted a great question for clarification in the group chat that I think we should address.
Yes, the, the Ark will not be reimbursed if the person goes home on a Saturday for an overnight. If, if we can bill on a Saturday, no, there's no loss. So if they don't leave for a certain period of time, whatever we decide, and they can receive a service, then they, we would not lose that 50, we would not only be paid $50,000. and they can receive a service, then they, we would not lose that 50, we would not only be paid at 50%. We would be able to bill for the 100% billing. The ARC is trying to get it just so that we don't have a time date, as long as we provide a service. So if we provide a service and meet some other criteria that we would be able to bill. Again, we don't, we're not advocating to limit. We're just letting you know what the issues are and the impact of such. Does that answer your question, Amy? Okay, someone's got in here too that they missed the work center in Messina. And, you know, we would love to have kept it there. That was closed because it was losing over 200,000 dollars a year. It did not meet the requirement for the transformation of the work centers. However, if we are successful with a project that we're trying to do in Augsburg, which is repackaging of number five and number 10 cans of fruits and vegetables and soups. We're working with our food vent or, or purchasing group right now on that. We're pretty close to it, we're pushing hard with him. We're just waiting on the label that would enable, would enable us to be able to track if there was a recall on the product. But what basically what we're doing is we're buying single cases of vegetables, fruits and, and also soups. And then we're repackaging them into a variety pack and we're charging a premium to do that. Because with the food vendors, whenever they break a case, it costs them more money. So they don't want, and the, the vendor that delivers it does not want to have to break the cases. It's extra work for them. So we, we think this is going to be successful. It'll be added to the order form for PFG across the whole state of New York and also goes into Vermont, I believe, too. So if it's successful and takes off, we may have to move capacity to Messina and open up a small part of that back. It will be operated as a, it'll be operated as a business. So something that may happen in the future, that's what we're looking at. Next question, there's, is there a waiting list for new people since they're only letting one new person per week? I'm not sure if they're referring to people from the community or people from our residences. We're concentrating on people from the community first up in St. Lawrence and then we'll bring back some people from the residences into those site-based programs. We're trying to meet the needs of the people in the community and the state-operated facilities first before we concentrate on the residential people.
Is someone, Jared, I don't know, are you talking about the work center or the day programming?
Sorry, I was talking about like the day hab. My son's, my son's new. And so he started, we started registration like Christmas time. And then COVID hit. And so I was told by Ms. Flowers, Faith Flowers, his case care manager. She said they only let one person in per week. And I asked her if there was a waiting list and she said she didn't know.
So if it's for day hab, we are able to take people on a day hab. It's really, it's a, it's a state OPWD issue, I believe, not a ARC, Jefferson, St. Lawrence issue. Is this for Jefferson County or St. Lawrence?
Jefferson County.
Okay, so if we had to add somebody to day hab, usually we get, we'll get a email from Sarah Gallagher asking what we've used for our capacity, if we have room. And I've not seen one, I believe, for Jefferson County, I've seen a couple for St. Lawrence, but I haven't seen any for Jefferson.
We can follow up on it and make sure someone reaches out to you. Because I'm not really sure of the one person per week waiting list, but we'll, we'll look into it and get back to you.
So.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
So can, can we, can you put your contact in the chat box so we can respond to you?
Yes, I can, and I'll put my son's name, he has a different last name than us.
Okay.
And I'll write it down.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one question.
Yep.
When is the day hab going to open up in Pottstam?
Um, yes, so one of the things that we did up there was we looked at capacity and we tried to regionalize it. As soon as we get more capacity in Norwood and Canton, then we will move out to Pottstam. Right now, Pottstam is being used primarily, primarily for children, youth in evenings. But as the capacity grows at Canton and Norwood, we have to move to a different location. Then Pottstam will reopen and Messina also.
Because I have a son that's in Herman IRA, Craig Patrick, and he's getting pretty restless. He would like to go back to work, he was working up a Dodge Bond and.
Yep, so residential, residential is, is on the end of the phase where meeting needs a community first and then residential will be able to come in. Do you know where we're at with that, Lynn? Is Cassian?
I'm not sure if that's her number, but I do believe we were just acclimating the people returning from the state operated and then we were going to start bringing people back.
Yeah, I got a letter from Craig yesterday.
Did you?
Yeah, he wants his channels back. When we switched the internet and upgraded the business, it eliminated the residential. So Christine's working on it right now to get that put back into place.
Oh, okay. That's what he was talking about then, he kept telling me that there was something wrong.
Yeah, he sent me a letter and he wrote every channel that he wants put back on. He advocated well, I'm surprised Ed wasn't in on that one.
Howie, did you see Amy's question in the chat box?
Is day hab staff allowed to take your family member outside if unable to wear a mask? Yeah, I mean, we, we try to, we try to have people wear masks, but we know not everybody's going to be able to. So we try, the staff are wearing a mask, we try to social distance with any activity we do out in the community.
Well, my main thing was like, my son, I mean, he doesn't do the day hab, the work things. I mean, nothing right now because of not being able to tolerate a mask. And I've asked about, there's a park in Gov. Nor where there's, sometimes quite often there's no one there or there's very few people and if there are people there, everybody would be socially distanced. And I was told that the day hab at my son's residence, they say no. They, they can't, he can't get out of the van, that's what they're telling.
All right, so we will take care of that because we are seeing that, I've personally seen that as an issue. I think we're, we're not getting people out enough. The only guidance from OPW we got was try to limit outings to once a day. Social distance and, you know, not put them in jeopardy, but.
And I certainly wouldn't want him, you know, in any situation where he would be jeopardized or anyone else, of course. I mean, this, this is a place where they have easy access to it, it's beautiful. You know, very few people there and, I mean, he knows, like, he full well knows, he, you know, he, he understands about the situation of crowds, he knows he can't be in a crowd, would never do that. But, you know, the, the res hab, Tina has stated, you know, her, the res hab, she's made it clear to them. But the day hab, you know, she said she has no, you know, she doesn't have control of that and they're just, they, they said no. No uncertain terms, I'm like, okay.
We'll, we'll let Cassie know about that.
Okay, thank you, that's awesome.
Okay, so Tara, do you see that one? We're, we're, are we allowing people to pick up their family members? We are, right?
Yeah, unmute.
It did hold the space bar. Yes, they can, they can pick their family members, we don't have a restriction on that.
Yeah, we did initially when we first started to take people home, but I don't, it's still not irrelevant. Anything else? All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna put some information on the website. Someone have something?
I just have a question.
Yep.
My brother lives in a home in Pottstam and we haven't been able to go pick him up and take him for a ride or anything.
Yeah, I think it's just a, it's a communication issue. So we'll, we'll address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We've been overly protective, you know, we gotta let the, let people take part in the community as long as they're safe. You know, anyone who comes for a visit, we're still gonna, if you're gonna come into the house, we're gonna check your temperature, we're gonna ask you the questions, those kinds of things, but, you know, it's, if you look at how are the people we support were treated, they were basically put in prison for quite a few months. They did not have the opportunity to go out like everyone else did. I mean, initially, yes, it was appropriate, but as long as it happened, I don't think it was for the period of time that it occurred. You know, people are getting stare crazy, we just got to get them out in the community to do things. And that's more than just taking a van ride, you know, sticking part in some activities. You know, I, I was a rec therapist at one time and I always found that the more actively involved people were, the less issues you're gonna have and the happier they're gonna be. So I think that's what we've got to, got to look at. So in regards to advocacy, we will be putting on the website the information related to who to contact, how to contact and in a little bit of a scenario, the issues and what you can talk about or even a letter that you can send and modify what we put in place or sign off on it. And there's going to be a lot more advocacy, advocacy coming out from the Ark of New York. And they've joined with the National Arc on some of these issues, both at the federal advocacy level and the local and state. I can tell you that all of our legislators are on board with us. They're aware of the issues, but it doesn't hurt to let, from a family perspective, let them know. We will be reaching out to Stefanik too, we, we have had talks with her on 14C. I know that Jula Brand is for elimination of the 14C certificate and Biden also is. So we've got to get out there and do some advocacy. Any questions, any more questions?
Howie, there's one more in the chat box from Carol.
Yeah, we answered Carol's.
Okay, sorry. Can we take them out for lunch and bring them back? Okay.
So Howie?
Yes, Ellen.
Okay, I'll be coming up to see Patty this next week and I can take her for a ride in my car, but I still can't take her into a restaurant, is that correct?
I, I would say you can.
Oh, I can't.
Everybody else can go in a restaurant, why can't you and your sister go in a restaurant?
Okay.
You know, they have rules they have to follow. You know, they're not gonna overcrowd the restaurant. I mean, most of them are pretty well-prepared around here and following the guidance.
Okay, well, she'll be real happy to hear that.
The Fairgrounds is open now too, Ellen, just to let you know.
The Fairgrounds Restaurant?
The Fairgrounds Restaurant is now open.
Oh, I love that place.
Well, thank you very much for, for this, we'll, we'll try to do this again, you know, keep you up, upgraded on what's going on, updated. And we'll put stuff on the website and communicate. But, you know, things are going very well at the organization in regards to COVID. We've been very successful, hopefully it continues. We know that, you know, the flu season's coming our way also. And if we can get through this, this winter, hopefully the vaccine will be in place next spring or summer and, and this will be behind us.
And anybody that we promised follow-up to will get to you by the end of the week.
Okay, it's recorded and this will be put up on the website at some point too. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Howie.
Thank you.